Because. And you're on. Thank you.
Where's my thing?
Okay, we all set? All right. Good evening. We've already started the meeting in open session before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. And per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, that's general law, chapter 30A, section 20. The public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as chapter 20, section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these as it is practical to. Any members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link on the GMRSD website. It can be found under School Committee Notices and Agendas for upcoming meetings, and it would be under tonight's school committee meeting. We're live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV, and a recording will be available later on MCTV and the district website. And we'd like to welcome any visitors we have this evening. If you are joining us in our Zoom audience, please remember to keep your camera and microphone off. And this would be the point in which we have opportunity for public participation, policy BEDH, but I don't believe anyone is waiting this evening to participate remotely. Okay, so in that case, important events. Brian?
So I just kept the same events on from the previous agenda as no new events have been added from the previous meeting. I know that when we get to Joanne's report, she's going to add a little bit of information about changes to the summer food service program.
Okay. So the important events are?
The summer program began on July 6th, goes to August 4th here at Sheffield and also high school, middle school. The summer food service program began on June 27th and goes until August 19th. And then Great Falls Middle School will have its new family orientation on August 24th at 6:00 PM. And the high school new student in ninth grade orientation will be on August 25th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you very much. We don't have a student rep report in the summer. Before we go on, Tina, I think we might have a guest or two who could be in our Zoom audience now.
Sorry, no, Jean, I still haven't seen, I'm not seeing Brooke at all.
Okay, all right, but if she arrives, please just let her into the Zoom audience. Thank you. Heather?
I did want to, first, special events. I deleted it, sorry, because I put it in my calendar already. But Sheffield, oh, here it is. Sheffield is doing popsicles with the principal. And so there are three dates for that to work for people. It's July 19th, 6 to 7, July 27th, 4 to 5, and August 4th, 1 to 2.
Thanks, Heather.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, sometimes one of our members will hear about an event, so don't ever hesitate to let us know if you do. We'd be happy to air it. Next superintendent's report, Brian, please.
And if you took a look at the report, it's very brief. I just wanted to provide a very brief update on not all of the capital projects, but the big ones. There is some good news on both of these counts because one of the things that, whether you're a parent or an administrator or a teacher, no matter what, you're always stressed out when a school is torn apart in the middle of the summer because my concern is, is everything going to be done for the start of school, you know, to enable teachers to get in and kids to get back to school on time? So for Gill Elementary School, the flooring installation has been completed one month ahead of schedule. The main office, the nurses' office and the restrooms are included in addition to all the classrooms that were remaining from last year. And facility staff have begun to reassemble the rooms this week. So we're pleased to inform the committee that Gill is done. The Gill floor is done, not the whole building. Hillcrest Elementary School, the abatement project was completed one week ahead of schedule, which is great news. The flooring installation bid has been awarded, and we are waiting for a response on the contract that has been sent to the installation company. With the early completion of the abatement project, we're hopeful that the floor and carpet installation can now begin ahead of schedule. In addition to that, one of the things that we're, as we're waiting for the contract, the company that did the abatement is also doing air quality testing to make sure that there's no asbestos in the air. And they need to do that before the floors can be installed. And outside of the flooring projects, the CDC, you know, while we're seeing transmission of COVID increase with variants across the country, Franklin County still remains low. And I did include the cases that have been reported over the last 14 days in our towns and the surrounding nine towns, as well as the percent positivity. Keeping in mind, of course, that many people are not reporting positive cases because they're not doing them at a PCR site. And that's it for my report for this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Business and Operations Report, Joanne?
I want to, I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, I was reading and not looking, I apologize.
You're doing a good job. I'm a miss. I'm just curious about, at the Gill School, about the doors, the new doors that are supposed to go in and the window that's supposed to be put in, et cetera, you know what I mean? Is that started at all? Is that in progress? Is that planned?
That's still planned, you know, for the future. But I guess we had gotten estimates for that job. And then when we were doing the floors, we couldn't do that job when we were doing floors initially. You know, it covered the same area. And then the cost, the construction cost went up. And so now, to get those quotes again, we're going to be higher. So.
It's basically back at zero.
Right, back at, right. I mean, we have those estimates, we can contact the companies and see if they'll refresh them. I don't, I would doubt that we could get it done before school starts at this point because we haven't worked those details out. But we may be able to do some pieces of that as we prep for those doors. You know, every time we talked about them, there was talk about, well, maybe we put an addition on the outside of the building, you know, instead. And that's a heck of a lot more money than, you know, putting a doorway up in the middle. So.
I know, I know, I'll get questions about it from here in town, so that's why I ask. It's still pending. That's good.
Still pending, yep.
So however, Bill, other actions that are being taken in the meantime, the building is almost complete with its rekeying and installation of new locks throughout the building. And a new door monitor system is being installed and should be completed before the start of school.
Okay, okay, that's good news. Thanks.
And one thing I wanted to add about the floors. So the company that did the floors in Gill is the same company that is awarded the bid for the floors at Hillcrest. So we were happy with their work, so it's good news that it's the same company.
Yes, and ahead of schedule, that's excellent.
Right. They work some weekends to make that happen.
Nice.
Okay, so I'll jump into my report. So the fiscal '22 year-end flows out. So, you know, we worked to close this year out over the course of the summer. Teachers have a choice to get paid through the summer. So they've worked all school year, and now they can get paid for paychecks over the course of the summer. So for the most part, we know everybody that's going to get paid by now, unless there was something that was missed. So it comes down to the purchase orders and the shopping that was done. And sometimes the shopping, you know, we order things, we need to order them before the end of June, but we don't need to receive them. But we do need to have ordered them. If we have services, we have jobs that are getting done. For the, this is our general fund, the job needs to be done before the end of June. So that type of thing, we're just collecting the final invoices. We're trying to get everything in, and I'm really, fingers crossed that we can have this year closed out by the end of July. Normally, we, you know, it's the end of August when we're doing that, but we're hopeful that the end of July is going to be a possibility. But I give you a little chart here, I wanted to talk about our state aid. So on the revenue side. And some of this state aid that you're looking at on that chart, you can see our receipts, chapter 70, right? What we budgeted is what was on the cherry sheet, the final cherry sheet, and that's what we actually received. But charter reimbursement, you can see there that the cherry sheet, the initial cherry sheet said we were going to get, or the final cherry sheet said we were going to get $266,000. We only budgeted $161,000 because I never trust that those numbers are going to be quite accurate because they're not really based on the data for next year, they're based on historical data. And then you can see the actual number there of $508,000. It came in very high because our charter enrollment had gone up high also. However, they did end up giving us more money than they should have on the charter reimbursement side, while also charging us too much on the charter expense side at the bottom of that chart. So on the bottom of the chart, you can see school choice. So I budgeted higher than what the cherry sheet said. So the final cherry sheet comes out long after our budget's complete. So we base those numbers on a preliminary cherry sheet. What I'm showing you here is the final cherry sheet. So the final cherry sheet said 1.4 million. I said, let's be careful and budget 1.6 million. And the actual number for us came in at 1.5 million. So, you know, it's good that I budgeted high on that. For charter tuition, I budgeted low. The cherry sheet number came in at 1.3. I had budgeted 1.1, and then the number came in at nearly 1.7. However, the DOR overcharged us by over $300,000 there. So when the state puts out, they put out a summary, and they say, this is what your choice expense and choice revenue is going to be this year. Here's their final numbers. And we don't get that until the very end of June, which is really hard to balance the budget when we don't know if that number's going to be, you know, it could be a swing of $200,000 more, $200,000 less. And we really don't have any idea what that's going to be until the very end of June. So we have to be really careful. So when the State Department of Education put out the numbers and said, this is your total expense for charter school, I was excited because it was like 1.3 million. So we were going to be in good shape in those areas. And then when the Department of Revenue sent us our money and took their charter out, they had taken $300,000 more than what our charter number said. And we had received $127,000 more on the reimbursement side than what the final report had said. So at this point, the Department of Revenue owes us $200,000 to get us back to what we should have received for charter. And so that can't happen in fiscal '22 because the year's over, we're not going to receive it. So we can expect that money hopefully in fiscal '23. We had an error a couple of years ago, and I had to keep contacting them and hoping that they would get that money to us. But that time it was, you know, $75,000 or $100,000, right, nothing, just a little bit. But it took over two years to get that money back. So I'm going to stay on them, and I'm going to keep reminding them that they owe us this money. And each month I'll look, and if I don't get it each month, I'm going to reach back out to them. But that's, you know, if I'm not watching these numbers, I'm not sure, I'm not sure they noticed the error and tried to correct it because I know how much work it was to get the last one corrected.
Well, and if I just interject right there before we move on, I just need people to realize, looking at this, the error was on the part of the Department of Revenue. We had our numbers correct, and they made the mistake when they were calculating and paying us, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, so that's a mistake that you found, and now you will nag them until they fix it, right? Which is what you love to do, but thank you for seeing that. I mean, that's real money.
It is.
Yeah, right.
Yep, and so, so while closing out this fiscal year, fiscal '22, it's pretty tight because we got overcharged by $200,000, all on the expense side, you know? So I need to be, I need to make sure the budget balances, and I need to make sure that the expense side is not overspent. And so that means, basically, we need to reduce by $300,000 the overcharge. Other lines, make sure that we have money to cover that. And so, you know, so far it's looking okay that we're going to be able to do that. So we're well on our way. So maybe at the next meeting, I'll have more news, and I'll be able to give you a preliminary operating statement that summarizes that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I had an update on the floor, but Brian took care of that. And the warrants, which we will cover soon. One of the things that I'm going to ask you to do when you're approving the warrants is to authorize Jane Oakes to sign the July 15 cleanup warrant. So on July 15th, we're able to pay all bills for, that are from fiscal '22, without rolling forward. You get one more chance to clean up those bills on July 15th, but it needs to be done for July 15th. So we really can't wait to mail those checks at the end of July, beginning of August, after your next meeting. So I'm just going to ask that you allow her to sign, and then we'll bring it to you for approval at the end of July. The banking resolutions will also come to you next month. And the fiscal '23 budget, I just wanted to let you know that the state has still not set their budget. So, you know, fingers crossed, there's extra money, there's a surplus this year. And maybe some of that will come to us in the form of extra chapter 70, rural aid, something, some special money that comes to us, small rural districts, help us out. And I did give you a copy of the expenditure report that is line by line, the budget for fiscal '22, so you can take a look at that if you want. And I will summarize that for your next meeting into an operating statement. And I have one more thing. So Molly Brooks is our new food service director, and I asked her to look up the new rules for summer feeding. New rules just came out about a week ago. And so these are taking effect now. And so I will just read to you what she gave to me. "The Keep Kids Fed Act, recently enacted by Congress and signed by President Biden, authorized the USDA to be able to create waivers to the National School Lunch Program and that each state would enact as needed." And so for Gill Montague, what does this mean? It means we're able to allow students to come to our open sites and get breakfast and lunch and not be required to sit and eat at our site. It also means that parents and guardians can pick up meals for their children. So this means that any student up to age 18 or 22 in certain circumstances, or a parent or guardian of those children, can get a free meal from one of our open sites. At this time, we're only able to offer one meal at a time, so parents and children will need to come to the sites each day for breakfast and lunch to get their meal. Our open sites, our Turner's Falls High School, Unity Park, and Irving Elementary School. And also, she wanted to remind you that all students in Gill Montague will be able to get free meals during the fiscal '23 school year as we are finalizing the paperwork for authorization for the community eligibility provision district-wide. And so if you have any questions, you can reach out to Molly Brooks, and her number is 863-7506. And she's also on email, molly.brooks@gmrsd.org.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Joanne? Thank you. So just to summarize, for the summer feeding program, people are not going to be required to eat it on-site.
Correct.
For their families, and it's any person of that age who is here in town, anywhere.
Yep, and they don't even have to live in town. You can go from another town, come to our sites and get a lunch.
Right, right.
We don't take ID, you don't need to live in town. So this is different because initially, when we started this program, when the students came, they needed to sit down at the site and eat on-site. And a few people left because they, you know, they were coming to pick up meals for their students, their children, like they had in the previous two years. Or, you know, they just wanted to grab and go, and that wasn't allowed when this first started. So grab and go is allowed now, and so we're trying to get the word out.
Great, yes, maybe we could give a little publicity about that because, right, pre-COVID, everything had to be consumed on-site.
Right.
And that's what it went back to before this new regulation came out, correct?
That's right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else for Joanne? Thank you. Moving on to school committee reports, the Warrant Subcommittee. First of all, we have a fiscal year '23 accounts payable warrant. That's to pay the bills, number 3301, dated 7/13/22, in the amount of $141,485.53. I will entertain a motion to approve that. Heather, thank you. Second?
I'll say.
John, thank you, and then we'll have a roll call for that. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And me, yes. Then the second item is, if it's acceptable, we'd like you all to authorize the school committee chair, which is me, to sign the fiscal year '22 accounts payable cleanup warrant that will be out, and it will be sent to you in an email, as they all are. It will be dated 7/15/22, and it will arrive probably a day or so after that, perhaps, Joanne?
Yes, I think we're going to try to send it out on the 19th. And it may come in two separate warrants, so we could separate the grants from the general fund, just to make things cleaner.
Okay, but everybody on the committee will get that to look at. And then if you all vote it that way, I will be able to go in and sign it for the committee. So I will entertain a motion to do that, if that's acceptable.
Come on.
Heather, thank you. Again. I think I heard Jennifer first, thank you. And we will have a roll call for that as well. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And me, yes, thank you. Moving on to the business section, we have some information in the packet about outdated texts and materials. We don't have to vote on that, I believe it's simply informational, correct, Brian?
Yeah, so I just included a list that was given to me by Jean Powers, who coordinated with Julie Dubriel. And we basically looked through books that go as far back as the 1980s, 1970s, you know, to remove them from storage and recycle or discard them appropriately. There are very few books on this list. Jean Powers has done a little bit of research and found that there's only one book that might go for $10 used on a site like Amazon or something like that. So most of these items will be recycled or discarded. And then around the start of the school year, perhaps a month or two into the school year, with new social studies texts having been integrated, the social studies department at the high school will be bringing a similar list to the committee to get rid of some items that are also outdated from that department. So as we're updating curriculum and materials, we'll be regularly bringing items to the committee to make you aware that, you know, we're removing them from our inventory. And so the list is attached to the document, I'm sorry, to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Brian? Heather?
I just want to throw a plug out there for potentially finding an opportunity. I mean, somebody somewhere in the world could use these books before recycling, so. I'm happy to help look, too. I haven't, but I know that somebody would get. I mean, it's physiology, it's not changed that dramatically. It certainly would be useful to somebody.
I support that and would happily do research, too, if needed.
Okay, we'll be happy to look into that. I think that's reasonable, especially if it reduces removal costs, you know? But yeah, I mean, being able to get this into the hands of folks who might be able to make really good use of it is certainly a worthwhile endeavor to look into it. Thanks.
I think that's a good idea, and thank you both for offering. And I think it's good, though, to keep weeding things out because I can remember quite a few years ago when I was teaching, books just ended up stored somewhere for way too long, and by that time, nobody could use them for anything. So this is a good time to try to get them used. Thank you. Okay, next, discussion about remote in-person school committee meetings. So right now, the legislature of Massachusetts, the Senate and the House, I'm going to try to summarize this, and Brian, correct me if I get it wrong. The Senate passed a bill which basically says remote meetings are acceptable for groups like school committee through December of 2023. The House has a version that doesn't last as long and has some different provisions in it. So what they have is, they don't have an agreement yet on something that matches. Is that correct, Brian?
And so. So we're hopeful that, you know, maybe by the end of the week, which is the deadline, for making changes that would require bodies like ours to move back to in-person. I'm hopeful that the committees, the conference committee can come up with something and that we have that information before we need to plan for our next meeting.
Bill?
You know, I reflect on that, the proposals, and I focus more on, the language is really around public participation in meetings. And it is stressed that, in that, so it's not dealing with the committee, per se. It's dealing with our audience, the community in general. And it is also citing the advantage particularly to people that are homebound or somehow otherwise compromised in their ability to get there, whether it's transportation or whatever. So I'm not sure, I just want to be sure the context that we're talking about is correct, that this isn't necessarily about our school committee meeting. It's more about the public and increased transparency of public business. That's my opinion.
So Bill, what I'll do is, I'll forward the email that we received that just from MASC to the whole committee, where the different, one of the versions, the House version of the bill in particular, does have differences in the way that the committee needs to meet. And so that's why it needs to go to conference committee so that they can come up with a combined bill that would work. But I think, I don't disagree with your point about public participation, but that's, it's not referenced here. So I think public participation is, they're probably looking at that the same way they did when they made the initial accommodation. And hopefully legislators are hearing what you're saying because other people are are saying that to them. And I'm very much aware of that. It's not just committees, but the the general public is also, you know, interested in having greater access and and being able to be online and participate publicly does give the public greater access to meetings as well.
And just as a follow-up, I want to, this came up last and I think, are we going to touch on? Jane, are we are we touching later in this agenda on the school committee meeting in public or or not?
Well, I think once we've talked about where the law stands, I thought this would be a good opportunity with this item to see what people are thinking. I mean, if we, if it doesn't pass and we need to go back in person, we'll go back in person. And I mean, that's an easy decision in some ways, but if it's still allowed to be remote, then I thought it might be a good idea to get people on this committee to weigh in about how they were feeling about it, whether they, as we've done at other points, you know, are people feeling they'd prefer to be in person or not and kind of get a consensus?
Okay, and with with that understanding, I just wanted to clarify the reporting of our last meeting when we had this similar discussion. And I don't need to wait until you unfreeze, but I'll keep going. That we had this discussion and it was reported that I made some comments which were true. But the point that I was making was that I agreed with Jennifer and and Nick about their apprehension about coming back to in-person meetings. And I said I sympathize with that, understood it. But I've been a proponent from the beginning of being willing to go back to in-person meetings and I said I would simply, with all of my defects, I would do it and I would wear a mask and I would encourage, as I go out in public now, most of the people around are not wearing masks, I do. And so it's on that basis that I would feel okay going back to our being in-person meeting. And then in conjunction with that, some of our members could meet with us virtually. But then again, I understand our tech support isn't necessarily there in order to do that. So anyway, that's all. I just wanted to correct the the story in the paper.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Right. And I think it, if we do have a choice. Well, even before there was COVID, a committee could choose to have some remote participation if they voted it as long as there was a quorum present and the chair was present and then people could phone in back in the day, which some of the meetings that I was at, it was pretty complicated because that was was difficult to have a conversation. If we go back to needing to all be in person, I believe that provision will be reinstated. Right now, the provision is different with being able to meet remotely if we choose to. So I guess this would be a good time just to get people to weigh in in case we have a choice by the next meeting. If we don't have a choice, we'll do it in person and and it will work as well as it will. So anything else you'd like to say about how you're feeling, Bill, or did that pretty much express it?
I feel great.
Okay, looking good too. Jennifer?
Yes, thank you. So it's a really interesting topic because I think for some people, we've discussed that remote increases accessibility for some folks and for others, it decreases accessibility. And so it's an interesting sort of conundrum because I guess the technology aspect is, sorry, these are new glasses and they're not really working. There's a, you know, I think the goal, of course, is to help facilitate inclusion across the all the bits. So I don't know the answer, but if there's there's a way for folks that can only go in person to be in person, I don't know with the some tech support, I'm not really sure. I don't have an answer, but I just want, I was, I mentioned the last time I was speaking, I'd heard some public ramblings about the unfortunate reality that we're still remote. A couple of folks didn't have access or whatever. While I also heard others say that it increases accessibility for folks. So it's like this, you know, there's a sort of middle way allows inclusion for folks who couldn't otherwise attend either in person or virtual. I mean, I hope I think I hope the goal is because this doesn't seem to be going anywhere, right, with all of its incarnations, COVID. I'm just putting it on the table that it would be super cool to try to strategize an inclusive solution as time goes on. I don't have the solution, so I'm going to stop talking now.
No, but thanks. I really would like everybody to weigh in. So I would expect by the fifteenth, the state will have come up with something one way or another. And then we'll have to respond and perhaps get an email out to the committee saying, you know, these are the choices and, you know, kind of work at it that way. Other opinions? John?
I would just say, everything else being equal, in-person is preferable.
Okay, thank you. Heather, Nick, any thoughts on it?
Nothing different. Yep, I mean, I'm happy to do whatever. It's easier to be at home with kids and everything, but I'm easy.
Okay, thank you.
My preference is to stay remote only for very selfish, personal reasons. And it's just a lot easier for me to to participate in these meetings if I can.
Okay.
You know, cut the time allocation down, adjust the amount of time I need to be at the meeting.
Yep, I mean, I I do, you know, I, John?
I was gonna say, I think we did have a discussion that it wouldn't be possible to have a hybrid meeting where some people were physically present and then others attended remotely. Was there issues with that?
I think I think we've reached the point where we probably can, technology-wise. I just think it it apparently presents more complications than if you have everybody out or everybody in. It's just is less of a conversational flow, I believe. I believe it's possible though now. I really think it is. I know our tech department team has been really working on it and everybody's been working to get the room in in good condition for when we need to be in. And I see both sides of it. I mean, I, you know, I find it easier to run a meeting when I'm there, but as Nick said, the time is cut down and I don't have to go out when it's snowing if we meet, you know, remotely. And it's, I'm just curious if we have, and some people will continue to wear masks and I probably will be one of them if we go in. I'm just curious to see how well the audience can hear us through the microphones and with a mask. I'm not sure how that will work simply because previous to COVID, sometimes the microphones didn't do a great job when we weren't wearing masks. And that's not, and you know, calling anybody to task for it, it's just the way it works or doesn't work. So, you know, I think we'll have to just see how it, what the legislature comes up with and then we'll probably have to just check in with everyone for the next meeting, what they're thinking will work best. I think it, it's it's complicated, but we'll see. I was hoping they'd come up with something by this meeting, but they're working on it. Okay, anything else before we leave the topic? All right, thank you. Okay. Tina, we don't have anyone else waiting to come in?
No, I'm sorry, I couldn't find my mouse, but no, nobody's there and nobody did arrive to show up.
Okay, so no one had come at all even earlier?
Nothing earlier either.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just checking. Our next topic is letters of interest and possible appointment to the open Montague School Committee seat. We have received a letter of interest. I was hoping the person might join us, but I'm sure on short notice, they may have had a conflict. We have received a letter for the open Montague seat from Brooke Martino, who has expressed an interest in joining the committee. And I think this would be a great opportunity for us to appoint her and then I will let her know after the meeting is done. That is the only letter we have received of interest for Montague and we haven't received any yet for the Gill seat. So we will go ahead and talk about that later. So in order to appoint Brooke, we need the committee secretary, who is John now, I believe, to place the name of Brooke Martino in nomination.
Okay, I nominate Brooke Smartino for the open Montague seat.
And we need a committee member to second that.
I'll second it. I'm sorry.
Jennifer, thank you. And we will have a roll call vote. Heather?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself, yes, yes. And thank you, Brooke. I will check in with her after the meeting and we will set up a time after she's sworn in by the town clerk to attend an orientation with the superintendent and myself. And we'll be happy to have her join us. And moving on to the next item, there's still an open Gill School Committee seat. So I think we will see if we can re-advertise in the Montague Reporter and the Greenfield Recorder that the Gill's seat is still vacant and we would welcome someone to send us a letter of interest for that seat as well. And the next item is selection of a school committee vice chair. Our vice chair unfortunately was unable to continue as a member. So we're looking for someone who would like to be vice chair. The requirements are that if you'd like to, you can attend agenda planning. It's not a have to, but you're able to. And if the chair is not able to attend a meeting, then the vice chair is in charge of that meeting. And that's pretty much it.
Do we need a vice chair?
So far, I've been doing it myself, but it would be nice.
Can you remind us what time commitment is?
It is, I say, it's basically the the vice chair is invited to agenda planning. They don't have to attend. It's just in the interest of getting more input when the agenda is planned. Other than that, the vice chair is basically serves in place of the chair if the chair is unable to run a meeting or I suppose if there was something else the chair needed to do and was not able to, the vice chair would take over.
And what night do you plan the agenda?
Agenda planning is usually done the Monday night of the week before the next school committee meeting. This time we did it on Tuesday because Monday was a holiday.
And it's the chair, the vice chair and Brian?
Yes, but if the vice chair can't attend, that's okay. It isn't always done, but we just think it's a good practice if if they're able to.
Well, I'm happy to help if I'm happy to give it a try if no one else, I mean, if no one else is willing. Because silence crickets make me nervous.
I I know, they make me nervous. Learning to control that impulse to fill the space with a chatter, which doesn't help people decide.
Is anyone else interested?
We could have a runoff. We could really have a contest or something exciting.
Heather, I know you're busy, I think. Bill? John? Oh, John, you're the clerk already, right?
John is the
I'd do it.
You want it, Bill?
Do I want it?
Yeah.
We don't require enthusiasm.
Yes, we do, Jane. Um, well, then it's all yours, Bill.
Okay.
You get
Yay, thank you.
Nation, I believe, Bill.
Say what?
By acclamation, I think that everybody says, oh, let's let him have the job. I think that defines that probably.
So do we nominate? Do I like, do I nominate Bill and then?
We have to kind of
Okay, I nominate Bill.
Okay, Jennifer nominates Bill and we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, and John second.
Oh, Sabrina's waving her.
I'm sorry, Sabrina?
Oh, I just had a thought. Is it possible to wait until Brooke Martino is available to be part of this discussion? Or is that not an option? I'm just wondering if she would express interest.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can wait. I just felt we had a couple of weeks without anyone. It might be, not that I intend to miss a meeting or anything because, believe me, I've, you know, haven't missed one in years, but.
No, I just need to have her miss that option if she is interested in doing that. But that's up to you guys.
You go to, you go to, you appoint me as an interim.
Jane, I'm wondering if, you know, the only concern that I have is if 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 you become unavailable until the committee is full again, including the, really the Gill member, I wonder if it would make sense to follow through appointing Bill and then put this back on the agenda once we have a full committee and open it up to the full committee at that point. At least, like Bill said, that would be more of an interim kind of situation, but at least we'd have experience back up for the committee.
I I think that's right. I think Sabrina and Brian have made a good point. We can certainly bring it back. And in the meantime, Bill, I think we'll be happy, we have a nomination and a second. And I think we can go ahead and vote you in with the understanding that we can put it back on the agenda. If that's acceptable.
It's okay with me.
Okay, in that case, we have a motion and we have a second. So we'll have a roll call. Heather?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And me, yes. Thank you. And thank you both, Bill and Jennifer. I appreciate it. The next item, just a quick reminder, the MASC, MASSS Joint Conference for twenty twenty-two in Hyannis, Mass, which is held in this, the first week in November. There is still time to sign up if any other school committee members would like to attend. If you could get the information to Sabrina by the fourteenth, because she, of July, she has to get it in by the fifteenth, I believe, at the latest, to get the more reasonable price for the conference. It's, um, let me just check my my information, which is right here in the packet. It is November second, second, third, fourth and fifth. It isn't required that anyone attending attend all of this, the days if they choose not to. I believe that yes, Wednesday, the second through Saturday, the fifth. If you are interested, there's a form here. You can get the information to Sabrina. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has, things like what meals she signs us up for. I can tell you what we generally do. If you are attending, the thing to keep in mind is you need to reserve the hotel yourself. And sooner is better because it fills up really fast. And then if you And then if you reserve the hotel yourself, and you will get reimbursed for that when the conference is done, and you'll all get, also get reimbursed for mileage to the Cape and back. There's a state rate of mileage reimbursement. So if anyone is interested, I welcome, you can get in touch with me if you have questions. Otherwise, just let Sabrina know by the 14th, please. And I have already signed up. I tried to go. I'm also chair of Division 5 this year and next year, which is the state is divided into divisions from MAS-C. Each different area has a different division number, and so I'm helping with that work for a couple of years. All right, any other questions about that? Okay, thank you. And next on the agenda, we have an update on the Six Town Regional Planning Board. There's a very complete report in our packet, and I know Bill has been our representative on that for quite some time, and I know Brian's been attending the meetings. So would either or both of you like to give a little information? Brian?
Yeah, so I just included the report that came from, so that our committee would have a copy of the report that was prepared by Dr. Rodrick, who's working as the facilitator hired by the Six Town Regional Planning Board. And it really was, or the basis of the report was a prompt that I, I made a recommendation to the Six Town Planning Group that all of the information that's out there is very technical. There's not a lot of information out there in the public, but one of the things that the the board itself really hadn't started to do was to begin to brainstorm, if not daydream, about what might be possible if the districts combined. And so this was sort of the first exercise in having teachers, and I threw out the idea of having teachers get together from both school districts. And so while not very many people participated, what's in the report is interesting and fruitful. And, you know, I hope it's the start of building a vision that the board could then take and present to the community as an option so that they could vote to have an option or could vote on something and proceed with a, with a clearer picture of what it would look like if we did get together. And so I feel like this was just sort of a first step in having teachers make a contribution to trying to see what that might look like and what might the possibilities actually be. And so the reports, it's pretty brief. There's only about a page or so of narrative, and then the rest of it is all bullet points on both the high school meeting and the middle school meeting. And so I just wanted to include that for your review.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, it was a good report based on limited data, frankly, because of participation, particularly of staff and staff in general, I will say. One of the things that I'm focused on, have been focused on is affirmation by the school committees that they want to continue doing this or even engage in doing it because the reason being that this whole process has really been promoted by Gil Montague. And we've been, even though this committee is formed by the select boards of the six communities, it hasn't necessarily been brought forward by the school committees, which, as I was talking about a previous meeting before our meeting with Brian and whoever wanted to listen. School committees and school districts are autonomous governmental units. And I question whether you can bring this to fruition, no matter what you plan, without the consent of, of both school districts. And it's been brought up earlier. Questions were asked of us in general about the other school districts in the, in the western part of our state, southwestern part. Several districts have, have combined successfully, apparently, this year. But I get the feeling that all of those school districts were engaged in the whole process. So in any event, I do want our committee to continue to, every now and again, reaffirm our support for the Six Town Regional. And then I'm also, I thought that I would approach the Pioneer people, but I'm not going to do that. People from, from that side want to do that themselves. And good for them. So in any event, as chair of the Education Subcommittee of the Six Town, what I want to do now is, as Brian has just suggested, start thinking about, dreaming about curriculum. I want to dream about curriculum because the financial side of our, our group, a separate Subcommittee on Finances, would, has a, a tool for looking at, for developing budgets, that they spent a lot of time getting to the point that they thought that it was functional. But they need information to plug into it, like what kind of courses do we want to have? How extensive do you want them to be? What kind of pro, across the board, what kind of programs are you going to have? So they can plug it in and come up with a budget number so that they can assess, so that we can assess whether or not any of this makes sense. Because it's all about student population and then the resulting financials that come the revenue side. So what we talk about in our budget is what we're trying to deal with in the Six Town fantasy world. One thing that, one question I have that seems like off, off the wall, but Brian, do you know how many acres is in the Gil Montague landscape?
At the high school specifically? No, not off the top of my head, but I could find that out.
I think it's, it's more than a few.
Yeah, it's, it's a
It's a big chunk.
Right.
The only reason I bring that up is, one of the things that you'll, if you go through that report and, and some of the things that people dream about, like foreign languages, the two foreign languages that were brought up were Chinese and Japanese. Those are both great languages, but I don't know the impetus behind focusing on those two. I think certainly French is, is out of vogue now, but, and Spanish is, is more desirable. And I'm sure there's other languages, but in any event, that's been thrown in there. Virtual courses are thrown in there, and then repeatedly Pioneer brings up that they have a 90-acre campus, and they could do lots of outdoor stuff. But in looking at that kind of thing, my response to it is, you've had 90 acres for 50 years and you haven't done anything with it. So why is that something that should be a positive? It's that kind of thing that we have to, that we have to work through, I think. And hopefully, the arguments that have been presented in the fat, in the past and that promulgated all of this discussion are still valid today, that we could be, we could be a stronger district if we combined, but not necessarily. So that's kind of where we stand right now, and, and Brian has received lots of positive press on the, on the committee for his engagement in the whole process. His, his work is very different from other people of the same position. And that's about it. My hope, any question, if anyone has any questions, fire away, and I'm sure I won't be able to answer them all.
Jennifer?
I have a really stupid question, and it is, what is the process? Like, what is the timeline process? I know folks like yourself, Bill, Brian, are participating in this process, but is there? And I did, I apologize, I think last year I did sit through a couple of meetings where some things were, like, laid out in terms of a template, but in terms of, you know, who would make these decisions? Like, who gets to decide? What is the process for deciding whether or not this is a good idea? So I see now, I just quickly sort of cursory look at that report, and it looks like it has some exciting bits, you know, like, what is the potential for this project to move forward, et cetera, but like, what are the functional, tactical, logistical next steps? And how does that, you know?
This committee
What's the mayor saying? Like, who, who makes those decisions?
This committee studies the whole situat, this committee studies the whole situation, and our, our charge is to then make a recommendation. Either yes, we think this is a good idea, or no, we don't think it's a good idea. We make that recommendation to the various select boards. And and then either our committee morphs into the next stage, which is, we're called a planning board, but really, we're a study board. And the next group would be a planning board, whether it's all, all of us or a totally different group is not set in stone. But, and then you're supposed to develop a whole plan. You have to submit that to DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and they review it and say if it's viable or not. And then that program has to be submitted to each town, and each town meeting has to approve it. If one town disapproves, that's scuttled. That's pretty much, and then the, the timeframe for all of that is most likely the next three years. This isn't something that's going to happen this year or next year. It's going to take a few years. Some of the complications in it are definitely working out labor agreements because both districts have somewhat similar, but really different arrangements, salaries, schedules, even the number of steps, blah, blah, blah. So you have to, you have to bring those two things together and then go from there. So it's, it's not a, a process that's even really started. It's, we're just trying to recommend whether or not to start.
Thank you. That's super helpful.
Pretty soon.
And Jennifer, you can, connecting through our website, or if you look, I'm not sure if it comes up in a Google search or not, but the, there is a link to the Six Town Regional Planning Board website where you can see the various reports that are part of the work to date of the various consultants that have been hired to conduct the initial parts of the study as well. So that'll give you some background.
You can Google it. Six Town Regional.
Awesome. Thanks so much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay, as a appropriate chair, I waited to comment. I think, you know, I think the work that's been done is, is, is really impressive, and there's more to do. I was part of the original study grant to study whether to study it, I guess, is how it could be phrased. I've always thought that it made sense to look at the option. It certainly does. And I think we still need more information before I, as a member of, community member of Gill, as well as a school committee member, before I could say this is the best idea. I, I think I need, we're getting a lot of financial information. I think what Brian and Bill have spoken about is, I think the word that Brian used at one point earlier was the vision, or maybe Bill did, and that's what I think is what I'm waiting to see developed, is the vision of what it would look like and how it would impact the many towns that are part of it. I think that will, I hope that will go a long way to helping people think about the process, and if it's really the best thing. I think, you know, the vision is critical. Even if it's just an abstract vision that may change, in the end, it helps people think about the possibilities. John?
I'm wondering, is it possible to get a comprehensive list of programs that are offered in one district and not offered in the other? And so, for example, when I was looking at the findings on page four, the second one says, "Take advantage of woodshop." So reading that, I'm assuming that either Gil Montague has a woodshop and Pioneer Valley doesn't, or vice versa. And so that would be the enticement for, you know, the districts to merge because, you know, we have a facility that you don't, and now we can all share it.
Yeah, if you were to go to either school's website and, and go to their program of studies, that, that individually, you could see what both schools are able to offer. It wouldn't give you an idea of what's there in terms of the facility, per se, because as schools decrease in their enrollment, sometimes programs are, are no longer, and, and aspects of the facility aren't, aren't used in quite the same way, so. But it at least give you a comprehensive list of programming.
Thank, thank you.
I've done that, and you find an awful lot more courses listed than actually are pursued. And some of that is, especially in, I noticed it more in Pioneers listing because they had, they had a whole lot of, of virtual stuff that you could, you know, maybe 50 different courses that you can take, but only a couple of those were actually engaging students. So the list compared to what's actually offered shows a great discrepancy. And we've certainly been looking at all of that stuff, but yeah, I think that's where it starts, and that's pretty much the basis on what I'm going to try to form a, a program of study around to give to our financial people.
Thank you.
And who else?
One of the things that I would like to bring up because, John, you alluded to it with the woodshop thing, is I don't think some, some discussion has gone toward how do we compete against the tech school? And I don't think that we are wanting to compete against the tech school. I think tech schools were developed with a purpose, and we can't be everything to everyone, especially when we have a big tech school in the same town, less than a mile away, even though it takes a lot of Montague kids. So that's not a direction that I'm going to go. Certainly, it's not a direction that I'm going to advocate for. Whatever I, I'm, I don't lead the group, the group. I just want to affirm that, that the group leads, and I'm just there to put in my two cents.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else? Jennifer?
That inspires one more question. I haven't read all the reports, so I apologize, but I'm curious how much market research is being done to sort of, because of course, I'm a, I agree that we can't be everything. I mean, we can't compete if everyone's trying to do the same thing. It's silly. So looking at, do we have a, are we doing the work to find out what needs aren't being met in a sort of cross? I'm sorry, the language is not happening in my brain, but like, to know in terms of proximity as well as needs, desires. Is there more need for tech in this area, more need for wood, you know, like low-end woodshop or like machining 101, or how are we going through the steps to understand sort of what is our marketplace? What is the demand? And, and using any of that data or that data point to build a dashboard to see, like, you know, some real metrics? some real metrics to really see what who wants what and like, what are the, what's the real potential? Because a lot of the brainstorming stuff is super fun, right? Because we get people excited about ideas, but just like any business plan, maybe might. But then in terms of like, what are people, what do we want? What do they want? Can we give it to them? And like, then what does that look like logistically? I was just curious if we have a budget for and an interest in market research, and if that's happening and or will be happening in a very tangible way.
That's that's a good question, and and that's certainly an in-depth process. I can say that from my perspective, I would start with, first of all, looking principally, we're looking at middle school and high school because the elementary schools are are pretty much just going to stay where they are. They're not affected as much as the middle and high school kids because they don't have to travel as far. But aside from that, fleeting fleeting thoughts.
Yeah, I would I would say, Jennifer, the best place to start, again, would probably be those reports so that you can see what what stage the group is at. But again, not having a a unified vision to to present to the six communities to consider as an option. I I would, in in my limited experience and and positive experience with the board, that they're very far away from doing that still in in terms of any kind of market research. What we do know is that I think it's focused on expanding educational opportunities for the students in our six towns. And I think they're still there at this particular point.
My brain is coming back. What what I wanted to say is that I thought I would start with, personally, I would suggest that we start with the requirements of high school education by the state. And then try to expand on that. The the focus is very much on how many courses are available, sequential courses, and how many of them can happen at the same time or in the same semester? It's the kind of thing where mostly it comes up in terms of advanced placement or honors courses. But it also comes up, should come up in things like study of mathematics and whether or not, for example, we can lead into precalculus, something like something like that, or certainly in the advanced placement stuff, that how many people can can take these, how often are those courses available? Because they're limited, their availability is limited by the scheduling that has to take place to put kids in those classrooms, which is then impacted most severely by small populations. So small populations are harder to schedule a complete a broad spectrum of offerings in in the same subject matter at the in each semester, and we regard that as a serious problem. So basically, that's an argument saying if you have courses on your on your study list, available study list, you should be able to offer them and take them when you want to. Maybe that doesn't, does that make sense, Brian? And now my brain is off again, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? And we certainly will revisit this. You know, I think it's it's good to get more information. It's good to keep the conversation going. And thank you both, Bill and Brian, for working on that. We appreciate that. Okay, looking at our agenda, we don't have any minutes to approve this time. If there are any agenda requests for the next meeting or any future ones, just please let Brian, Bill, or me know about it. Our next scheduled meetings will be July 26 and August 9. And to be announced whether, you know, we will still be virtual or in person or some hybrid of the same. We will, as soon as we have a little more information from the state, then we'll check into what we think makes sense, and I will check back with you all, and we will figure it out. I think that said, it's time to adjourn unless anyone has anything else. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Heather, thank you. Jennifer, and then we'll have a roll call. Heather?
Yep.
Bill?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Jane, let me know.
What was that, Bill?
I just want Jane to tell me when the next agenda session is is, and I'll be there.
Oh, great. Thanks. And right now we are doing them virtually. They can't be in person with just the three of us, whatever works best.
Send me an email, and maybe I'll get it.
Okay, and if not, I'll I know your phone number.
Okay, I don't have Heather's phone number. I don't have that, but I didn't catch her on there. So just want to tell her that we have things to sign.